Westside, we're ready to start. I don't know who's here for indication. Can you do the indication for it?
Yes, sir.
Everybody please stand. Chief, put your indication in my side of the page.
That's fine. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, all the many blessings that you give us. And, Heavenly Father, we thank you for this time we have. And we ask that you look over this meeting, that everything be done to the benefit of the city. Heavenly Father, we again ask you to watch over us, watch over each and everything that our employees do. Please keep them all safe. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, on my nation, under God, indivisible, clear and justice for all.
Number one call please.
May I read it?
Here.
Paul Reiser?
Here.
Congressman Page? Paul Reiser?
Here.
Thank you, Paul Reiser.
Here.
I want to make a motion to approve the minutes of January 20.
I'll second. I'll have Terry say aye. My motion is carried. The commissioners boards, myself, as far as the streets go, appreciate everything that my team, my chair did. Pretty rough out there. It's kind of hard to clear the streets when you don't have equipment to clear with, especially with ice being first. So, they've done a good job, but we had to work with it. We're not really kind of set up for that type of ice. I had a lot of complaints, had a lot of people that were glad that we did what we did, so pretty much the usual thing. Checking around other areas, White House is actually worse than Ridgestop. So, there's a lot of other areas that didn't get anything cleaned. I think the state kind of jerked their feet a little bit on the main highways for quite a while. Qs, they let us do it again tomorrow. So, hoping to get some street repaired down in five hours. I'm sure he's going to be a little short-handed now since Mike was down yesterday. I'm sure he can fill him up out of that if it ever gets, the weather gets good enough where we can work on it. But I'm glad Mr. Anderson's here as far as police and fire. I think that's a fire report. Chief, you have something?
Yes, sir. Hey Joe, we have a police report. We have started in on our GHSO work, which, you know, officers are coming in doing saturation patrols at night, concentrating on DUIs and any other offenders that they might see. And so, that seems to be an increase there with our traffic. Perhaps say that there was only three accidents and all of them were property damages past month. We did get another bulldozer. And now, we have delivered today with five floodlights from the LISO program. And that's pretty much all we got unless you have any questions for.
I want to say I appreciate the good job you've done as far as helping the city out with all the equipment we received. Got a whole lot of extra equipment.
I think right now we're at 23 pieces of equipment from the LISO program.
It's a great job. We certainly appreciate it. I'm sure all the people that they understood about it would know. Fire report.
I had 29 calls inside the city, it was 15 outside, it was 14. We reschedule the chili supper for March the 14th. And we have two firemen, a volunteer class, who will be going down to Billbuckle to finish their firefighting certification class.
A couple of colleagues saved me, I'm assuming with that. It's going to plan the zoning, Governor Harris.
Mike Bauer has taken over our city building inspector. All certificates of occupancies, basically none of CEOs, will be handed out by the city now. This is basically so the city can collect all the fees and reinspection fees prior to issuance. I have created a new fee schedule, which will be presented in March for building permits. Planning and zoning board has amended their monthly meeting schedule for this year only. We're going to have the meetings held on every third Thursday in order to accommodate Mr. Rick Gregory, our city planner. He had several conflicts with our fourth Thursday meetings. This has already been posted in the newspaper in order to inform the public. Planning and zoning board gave the final approval of the Ridgestop Station Phase Two development with several conditions. RCP culverts will be utilized under our streets instead of steel. The three riprock drainage head wall and end wall areas are remaining in place after the construction is completed in order to slow down the stormwater velocity. Therefore, we all decided no detention facility would be required as ordinance stipulates. Cell fencing must be maintained. We're going to be a little tight on this, basically because the Shedd Road area was just dug out from a locked cell built up from Phase One. And that was done by Josh Heath, Michael Keith. The new updated subdivision regulation books have been completed and handed out, and we have actors in the office in here. Jesse Lynch, new appointed early planning and zoning. She's offered to do the planning and zoning map. She's got GIS software, and she's going to do it up to a point where whatever she can for no charge to the city. So, that's going to help us out tremendously. Some of the items that she might not be able to do, she does have people that works with her that can help us out on that. Also, one of the things that we really was struck by, or I was struck by, I learned from DOT, Tennessee Department of Transportation, that Highway 257 actually has a right-of-way of 40 feet. It's 20-foot road and 10-foot of each side. And Highway 41 has a right-of-way of 100 feet, which basically means it's 18 feet back from the curb. Now, this come about when we, that sign from down on the corner down here was placed too close, it within their right-of-way. And so, that sign has to be removed, and it has to be moved further back, 18 feet back off the curb. T-Dot's supposed to be bringing me the paperwork so we can go ahead and change our ordinance to match their roads.
It was 40 foot from the edge of curb.
18.
18 feet from the edge of the curb.
So, the center of the road is 40 foot probably.
On 257, yeah, 257. And then on Highway 41, it's 100 foot right-of-way. So, it's 50 feet from the center and then 18 feet past the curb is what they told me.
Goodness.
Yeah. It's a challenge.
There are.
Well, it's basically because of the lighting, I guess, what it all comes down. And that's all I got for planning and zoning.
I've also asked Eddie Porter to join the planning and zoning board, and Mr. Webb has collected information about it. So, Eddie, I think I can do a real good job with you guys. Do you think he is?
No.
Okay. It's going to the fire department, Reiser.
Nothing.
Okay. Back to utilities, Robert.
CRS Engineering, they're about 50% through with the surveying for the Barwood situation. We're yard going to have to replace two 24-inch culverts. They're going underneath the street. The steel is completely rocked out on the bottom and they're undercutting. We also have an 18-inch culvert, which will probably last maybe four more years. And if we're going to do this, we might as well replace that now since our asphalt is supposed to be lasting most 20 years.
Where is that one? On the curb?
That's right, curb. Right, when you're going down now.
First curb on Barwood?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, every time. That's been a long time.
Yeah, yeah.
That's pretty, that's pretty long. A lot of them there, it was good work.
Yeah, they're all, all three of them are. We've come up with a new sewer agreement, which Jim submitted. He's going to produce, well, he's going to produce his services for $1,500 a month instead of $5,000 like he wanted for. This will include four service calls, and then any major service calls after these four will be assisted per hour with a minimum of $2. Our crew is handling most of the sewer problems at this time. This new agreement will save the sewer department approximately $3,210 per month. I'd like to make a motion to go into effect on March 1st to accept this new agreement.
Go ahead.
Say it.
Call and favor say aye.
Okay. Heath and Keith now have all of their gas OQs. Josh, Tony, and I have OQs to back them up. Now, we can start doing our own work and not rely solely on third-party contractors.
Excuse me.
Also, due to TRA regulations, the fire department, who responds on gas calls, are going to be required to have sensitive equipment in order to respond to those calls. Sensible equipment is about $2,000 for one piece. I'd like to make a motion at this time to approve funds for the purchase of that equipment for the fire department in the amount of $2,000.
Is that the total of the need?
Yes, sir.
For everybody to operate?
Yes, sir.
On second. I'll have Terry say aye.
I.
My motion is carried. What did that come about? The new, new regulation that came out for you?
Yeah, this was told to us when we were doing our OQs. Anybody responding to a call must have that equipment.
What does that equipment consist of? Anybody know?
It basically sniffs out your gas for you. So, therefore, if the odor isn't there, then.
We only got one there?
We've got one, we've got one with Heath and then the fire department needs their own. If they're going to respond to gas calls, they have to have their own. That's what was informed us.
And it actually will do, y'all actually can use it to do carbon monoxide and take some also.
Okay, so it's a deal sniffer?
Yeah. But actually, it's three gas. It'll do, it'll pick up propane too.
I've already got one as a carbon monoxide tester, but if we don't, the city is liable that something must have happened.
CRS Engineering will be assisting us with the super metering station problems and a possible bypass of the area event assembly. And of course, Mayor Dan has already stated that Mike Henry is quit, and so we will need to post that full-time position in-house by rule. Keith is temporarily filling that position at this point in time.
Keith, are you interested in that job as full-time position?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And our new sewer agreement with Goodlesville has been set back to the first month of March because they need some time, because of the weather conditions, they need some time to get with Henderson to build the White House utility. And that's all they have for utility.
I think we're pretty much covered there with Heath and yourself, you know, as far as what we did there. Nate, you have another one calling, I guess, by yourself, right?
Yes, sir.
When will Keith be able to, I know we can assist you, when will Keith be able to take the phone call also?
Just whenever he gets comfortable. Probably a couple of months, probably three months or so. I will make sure he's comfortable before I tell him to build a little, I'm just going out there, so.
Time to go to finance with Paul Reiser.
I'll butcher mine for 12,000 specifications. If you look at your account, actual account information, if you look at your LGIP, you see that it's come up here since last month, we have it 1,001.6138. And plus, we still got, well, paperwork numbers will be up pretty good too, and you've got these access.
Okay. As far as business reports, can our attorneys not hear this evening? Mr. Roderick, say your report, do you have anything?
City, so our engineering billed us for $380 for Phase Two of Ridgestop Station subdivision. We have filled Mr. Lodge for the invoice when it came in. Also, received a call this past week, it was actually last week, from a company, it was Blue Ridge Survey, that were inquiring about the right-of-ways for this Buck Hill Road. I told them that I wasn't sure about those, but I did, I'd have to do some checking in archives to see if I could find that information, like when the street was annexed in, if we had any right-of-way information on it. Since then, Attorney Morris has received a phone call from Richard Jones with Rogers Group. They're actually doing some work with White House Water as well, trying to find out some information. What's happening is White House Water has a galvanize line that runs back two shrooms, and that galvanize line has to be replaced because it's deteriorating. If that is a city street, then they're required to replace the line. If that is actually a, if not a city street, then they're not required to replace the line to the same matter. So, they need to know for sure, did we annex that street? Have we just assumed that it was a city street all this time? They need some documentation telling whether or not Buck Hill Road is really a city street per se, or if it's just a road. So, I need either some direction or someone to take that on and find out.
My first question is, are they installing a larger water line? Are they just replacing a, even have a look, kind of line, and putting in how big?
I don't, they just said that they would be going down the middle of the road to install it. That was the only option they had, is to go through the middle of the road. And that they would be repairing the road back to the condition that it is now, but that's what they need is, they can't start work until they have, like if the city owns a street, that they have an agreement with the city to be able to dig the road up and unacriminize to have a repair.
It's been a city street as long as I've been here, I don't know when it was ever annexed in, but it only goes to the house behind, the little house behind the jackyard as far as it goes.
Well, that was the other thing they were asking, is if it was, then they're going to need to know how many feet, and they're going to need some legal documentation. And it wasn't something that we said, or that way it's always been, they need legal documentation.
I wish it wasn't a city street.
Well, I suppose that after speaking with Attorney Morris, she said that if that street, I kind of explained what's, you know, how many people's on the street, what it utilized, and she said if that street did not, I made a note, so I get it right, if that street, the condition of the road and the use of the road was not for the, was not considered the welfare of the public, and the street was not to benefit, not just as a whole, that there were other options for that road. Now, they thought if that street did not benefit everybody, or if it wasn't the public, the city of Ridgestop's best welfare, then there were other options that you guys could look at for that street.
Did she say what other options?
She did have a couple of ideas, but she said that was something they might want to decide.
We've already, we've already come up with a D annexation fact at one time forward, Mr. Roderick. Of course, Mr. Schreiner didn't want a D annexation.
I'm not sure.
I don't know.
I don't think you can stop at the second league. Holidays and stuff, they shut the road down, because our road, they, they stick a stop sign up. So, I understand it's a D in road, but if it's a city street, they obviously can't just put a stop sign up when they're not there.
For some reason, you're never doing that.
For some reason, some research I did quite a while back, I think it's 482 feet from that stop sign.
I saw, they said they.
That's right.
They paid for work down there.
That's right.
But it was not very much, if that worked, not very much footage.
The old house behind the junkyard was a freighter's, mostly, and that was the last house in the city at that time. So, I don't know how many feet, Mike's probably pretty close to 480 feet. I don't know.
If somebody could.
Of course, there's nobody living there now.
Right. Actually, Strong bought Mr. Morris.
Mr. McCullough's down there, so I don't know. It's not my business.
But it's, that needs to be looked into because.
So, did White House initiate this water line replacement for Trump?
Why? It's something that I have to do because of the asset, I could also, I could, I don't know.
Okay. How's that do? I'll find out if I have anything for you. Thanks a lot. As far as mayor's comments go, I think, Governor Harris, we already met with the city at Goodlesville by our sewer, different issues with them. Excuse me, did a walk for you here back on that. Also met with Metro Nashville back first of last month. And talking about some issues on our sewer with them also. Get more into detail when we get everything put together on what we need to do as far as what Metro's asked us to do and our working agreement with Goodlesville. Anybody have any questions on Metro's sewer contract we exhibited today? I don't know a lot of questions to talk about.
What I, we didn't see anything from Metro. I'm going to call for a workshop because I got two, three items other than sewer, I'm going to put in a workshop, but hopefully next week we'll hear back on exhibit eight. The only information I can get back from Metro is from our, we originally always had 200,000 capacity. They've upped it to 240,000 today capacity, of course. So, I think that'll take care of any, we have any rain events, like they stated in contract, that should handle any of that.
And they blocked that open workshop, non-ushable. What did the other city contract that they presented?
They, Jim called me in. They had some discussion, I guess, down there because we had that in our exhibit eight, we all met, and the engineering had a conversation. We're only, we're less than a third of what it will handle. And I guess to make their numbers work, the way they want to, they gave the 240, 80,000 to handle.
Excuse me. Have you heard anything off from March waiter, from Bob Higgins? Has he contacted you? I left him a message Friday about those two sewer tanks that he said he could take care of. I'm sure he's trying to get some information on the exact addresses and location and a copy of the actual documents where we put, installed those on the face sheet.
I sent everything I had and I called him. I always send my bill all morning, and I called him on that and requested payment.
Okay. I'll follow up on that. It's going to new business, 2015, physical here budget letter from the controller of I think everybody's had a chance to look over this, and how much I see on there is a question. Anybody on board have anything to comment on here, or want them to go ahead?
Well, the, for one issue that they had, that's going to resolve itself with the new contract that Jim submitted, and now we're doing most of our own service. That's going to take care of the utility issue that they had written up.
I think we pretty much already discussed the contract with Jim submitted. Governor Harris, we've put it on that. Next I'll add the employee insurance.
This will be one line that we'll talk to, talk about at the workshop, but we did renew first of January, first of May. The city's cost went down a little bit, but then the other side is the out-of-pocket for the employee change. And I'm working on a couple of ideas for that, so hopefully I'll have all that put ahead and move to have a workshop.
Okay. It's going to add DC recording equipment.
I was hoping Steve Harper's going to be here. I think, not that he wants to get his, but I've done some research on our own equipment. I mean, of course, the camera he's got is a lot more expensive than what I was looking at, but for our needs, I was looking at worth of $400 to $1,200, just depending on what I would want to do. Just want to see, you still want me to look into it, or we need to talk to this gentleman and see?
I personally, I'd personally rather talk to this gentleman and buy the equipment if he's willing to. I get your city court.
I will say this, I talked to Jim Hunt just the other day, and he said if we set up our own equipment and recorded our own meetings, that he would, he would take a copy of that and still place on his website, on that just for, justnorthernashville.com. He says there is one, is there one other city sewer?
Yeah, Portland, and actually Springfield.
Portland and Springfield recorded their own, send him a copy, and then he posts it on his website. So, he's, he's not opposed to anyone else there in Cameron. He's just trying to get the word out.
Okay. Well, Josh brought up a question. I mean, wouldn't he have a system to do more for, I mean, if we want to do more than just the city meeting, like looking, a different system picks up where the audience is for court, and where you can watch and see somebody's acting up?
You could record all of the park board, the planning and zoning, take the recorder, miss something, secretary, whatever. If something's missed, you've got a backup, you know, I don't know what you're talking about. I'm sure with y'all's court, if something ever did happen.
Yes.
And you've got, you know, just kind of back y'all. I mean, what we thinking, is it $600 limit there, $600?
Well, we're getting into that, we're probably up for range. I mean, we'll probably be, my guess, $200, $500 to do the ring, where he can pick up audio real well.
And also Keith, I know he's adjusted our minds, I would like to talk, I talked to him today, just to see what he would, if he could help us out, if that says what he did for.
Right.
How many years?
Twenty years. Twenty plus years.
Or something he could help us out on. If I think level of their own system, I'd like, I mean, they would legalize it in more than one area.
Well, depending on how soon we have a workshop, I'll try to have some more information and overlook, see what Keith can come up with. Talk to him, and then I'll show him what I have.
Is there a statement about both that type of equipment?
Do what, sir?
Is there a statement about both that type of equipment?
I'll have to look into it, sir, and I will when we get with calls through.
Excuse me. It's going to the employee handbook.
I've worked on this issue, or worked on this project a little bit, listed copies in everybody's box. Again, that was, I put it on here to let you all know this might, be my third item, I guess, when we have a workshop to talk about, to do some updating to it because it's, it's missing some things that would help our department heads a little bit. So, that's all I've got for now.
Okay. As far as the plaques go, no one's here to see it, I don't think they quite knew about it. I appreciate you getting these for us, Kelly. I'll try to get them out next meeting. Going to citizens comments, anybody like to have a comment, please state your name, and we'll give you a minute to talk.
Kim Thomas, and I live on Barwood, 2544 there. But you know where Danger Hill is up around. I noticed all the flags and everything, and surveying going on. The surveyor said that the plans are to pave the roads and also put in the sewer lines ahead of that. He said, well, it'd be cheaper to put them in now and damage the road before the paving. My question is, what has been worked out as far as the citizens and what their costs would be? I know when Phase One was done, it was $500 down for the installation of the separate system, or the tanks and the lines and the pumps and everything. Then I think there was another $100 and a $50 maybe deposit, no, $50 connection fee. And I think in Phase Two and Three, those figures may have blown out a little bit. Are the citizens of Barwood going to be offered the same thing, or something similar? What kind of arrangements have been made for them?
Well, as far as phase a, to Phase Two goes, there's not. Well, as far as Phase One, Phase Two goes, there's not a Phase Three.
Okay.
We, we don't have the money to do that. And of course, those were, that was part of the money on Phase One and Phase Two. We're going to get one of those contracts paid off. The biggest reason that the other board members had for running the line was the least evidence there available. If anybody wanted to go right now, they'd have to pay the whole cops. If the line, if the line wouldn't be there. As I say, that later on, we may not be able to do something like that. You know, get another loan to hook people up.
Well, now, if, if we don't hook up, are we going to have to pay a fee for not hooking up?
No.
What, Jim, what we're talking at before we spend all that money on that road is, we haven't even got the engineering back yet.
Oh, I see.
And then we'll make a determination of how much of the infrastructure we even want to put in. We may only put the pipes in where the, this goes across the road. I don't know.
Oh, I see.
Is what we're looking at. And I mean, if the costs are efficient enough, we may put in all of the main line system. It's not able to connect to our main at the time. You know, we're starting to cause people say, hey, we'd like to go. And we'll hook the, can hook it to the main. And say if your system goes down, you can put in the new tank, the pumps, and hook to the line.
Is there, is there a follow-up? I mean, when the time comes, is it likely we'll be able to get the same kind of financing that the other parts of the city got?
I mean, that, that was all involved in grants and all, all of that.
We got, we got a million dollar grant on Phase One.
Oh, I see.
$980,000.
Josh, what's it costing somebody, back over here at the new homes, what's it costing to put in the system?
Take it all, it's 25, $55,000?
Yeah, they're over to right around $55,000, complete.
So I mean, if you have a safety system going down, you're going to spend about that much. If you have to redo the lines and.
I actually don't spend more than that.
About $10,000. They, they estimated it $10,000 for our house.
Yeah, to redo the safety system.
The, the problem you are going to run into on Barwood is when those houses were put in, there was not a secondary site. And then now, you know, if a line does go down, you're going to be very damaged on your secondary lines. Yes, sir. And this is just providing another option. And it's also, in my opinion, if we're, we're done, if we don't do it before we pave the road, it should have been done. As you know a lot of.
Because that's, that's our most expensive road in the city.
You mean, for paving?
Because it's so long, yes.
Oh, for, you mean for installing sewers, this?
No. We've got, we've got so much money in pavement.
Oh, okay.
And another thing we talked about, we're going to talk to White House Utility, make sure they don't have any upgrades or water lines they need to replace before we pave it. Because I don't want them to be paved, and then a week later, they're going to be cutting the hole because.
Yeah, they replaced my.
Yeah. You've got a rough rate for his house, the first dip on Barwood. That's been an issue for, I don't know how long. I've already fixed it five years ago. It's never worked. It's, it's, it's a place that's always wet. We're going to put new culverts in where it's just a problem, we're done with it. I mean, we're trying to get everything lined up so we can do it all in a long time.
This is all the reason we're getting the engineer and the report and everything. Because we, you know, we've had a lot of problems with the streets and caving in and stuff like that.
Yeah.
You know, we definitely have problems with, with our culverts that are going up underneath that street, rotting out and so forth, which is going to create more problems later on down the road. So, so we're just trying to combine everything into this one report. And once we get the report, then we'll decide what we can and cannot do as far as, as the sewer system is.
Where, where will the funds come from to, to put the, you know, the lines under the road?
That'll come from the sewer, you know.
It would be paid for out of the sewer.
Okay, well, I appreciate that number of people have asked me what, you know, what all the signs were about, so.
We're trying to plan ahead.
Yeah, one other quick question. I noticed the park was closed during the snow. Is there a reason it can't be open? I would think that, you know, kids would want to go over there and sled and play and.
The roadway was not open because there was some busy working everywhere else. They didn't want kids out there tearing things up.
Okay.
There were a lot of kids that went ahead and came over and slid. Yeah, they just walked over and had a big tent, all done here.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other Citizens Comments? Anybody else have anything to bring up? Yes. I'll make a motion to close the meeting. Your respect.
All set.
Hold a favor, say aye.